Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the lands we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hudnashoni, and the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaties thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, or in some circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal, O-L-T. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut any of those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. So, to begin, do we have any declarations of interest, conflicts of panel, or staff for items in the two P.M. time slot? Nope? All right. Thank you. Do we have any minutes to approve, Mr. Deputy Secretary?
Madam Chair, we do not, other than the one approved in the morning.
Okay. Do we have any deferral requests?
We do, Madam Chair. At the two P.M. time slot, we have two, item fourteen and fifteen. Why don't we start with item fourteen, which is sixteen ninety-eight Victoria Park?
Okay. Do we have the applicant? For sixteen ninety-eight Victoria Park? Aya Salome? Are you there?
Madam Chair, I don't see you on camera, just to let you know.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Sorry? Oh, the first name? Okay. Applicant or agent, are you there? Musa?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you. Could you state your name and address first?
Musa Aida, address fifty-five Village Centre Place, Mississauga. I am here in behalf of the owners of sixteen ninety-eight Victoria Park Avenue.
And the reason for the deferral request?
The owners of the previous owner is now changed, so the new owners is coming in, and new property management is coming in, and new owners also coming in. They still are not sure if they want to proceed or not. They are still in the process with the registration of the, or transferring the property, so they are not sure about this project we requested, if we can defer this application or cancel, withdraw it or cancel it. And the intake examiner is asked to be in front of the committee to request this.
Thank you. Any questions? There's nobody here on this item, item fourteen? All right, so should we take this into committee then? And do we have a motion for deferral? Member Senkar?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to defer this application signee die to give the applicants an opportunity to work through whether they want to proceed or not.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a secondar? Mr. Nipfel? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That application has been deferred.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We have another item for deferral?
Through you, Madam Chair, we have, the next item is number fifteen, requesting a deferral, number one Brayside Crescent.
Thank you. Do we have this applicant online?
Yes. That would be me.
Thank you. Could you, your name and address first, please?
Aida Evangelista, fifty-three Bentworth Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. And the reason for the deferral request?
There was a miscommunication for signage, and the sign was not posted within the timeframe per the Planning Act.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you very much. So we can take this into committee for a motion? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant to post the proper signage.
Thank you. Secondar, Ms. Martin? All in favor? That's unanimous, carried. Thank you. That item's good to defer. All right. Is that all, Mr.?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's all the deferral requests I have for the two P.M. time slot. We can proceed to the first item, being number thirteen.
Thank you. Item thirteen, sixty-four Glen Echo Road. The application is for a new two-story dwelling. The variances consist of setback of a platform to the west property line, maximum height of the side main walls, number of platforms outer above the second story, platform encroachment in the front yard, and the area, the maximum area of each platform. On file, we have the minutes from July eighteenth, a survey, email regarding forestry requesting deferral, six objection letters, city planning comments, the previous package from July, the Arbor's report, applicants' email to the neighbors, and six letters, oh, six letters of objection. Sorry, I mentioned that twice. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, Madam Chair. My name is Mehdi Hosani. I'm the designer and agent on behalf of the owner of sixty-four Glen Echo Road, and my address is two zero one Steels Avenue, East Toronto, Ontario.
Thank you. Do you have any changes to make to the application?
Yes, we prepared the presentation material that we're asking staff if they can roll that up. And we made some changes, so the forestry department now, and they don't have any objection with this application. And we made some changes to the application that I'm just going to mention this as per planning staff request.
Can we, can we use the, the public notice, sorry, as a guide for the changes to the variances? So start with the public meeting notes?
Yes. So, so number five, one point zero seven FSI is being reduced to zero point nine seven. And it's, on the, on the public notice, it didn't mention, but the planning staff requested this, that we are mentioning this during the hearing. So from that zero point nine seven FSI, zero point seven three of it is for first and second floor, and the rest of it is for the basement area.
Okay. Are there any other changes?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we do have a number of people here or online who are, would like to comment on the application. So we will have a presentation by you, and you have five minutes for that.
Yes, ma'am. So, can we go to the next slide, please? Yes, that's one. So as, as you members and the, and the public, looking at this page, the zoned area that this house and the property is located as, they have zoned as RD fifteen, and FSI for this area is zero point three five, which, if you're looking at this page, you're going to see the blue area, which most of the houses in this area, they have much larger homes and lots. And the small portion, which is the, the orange part on the north side of the Glen Echo, they have shorter and narrower lots. And the zoning being applied equally to all of them with thirty-five percent of FSI, which, based on my ideology, it's unfair to the smaller lots because they don't have the luxury of the larger lots to get bigger square footage as they needed. And in regards to the, to the minor variances requested, in total, four of those minor variances are related to the definition of zoning bylaw, that how they actually define the basement. Can we go to the next slide? To the next one, sorry? Yep. So this is the definition of the basement as per the zoning bylaw. So definition mentions that if the average height of the basement, it's above the grade, or above the average grade, or established grade, that's considered to be first floor. As you see in this photo, the pink area is considered to be first floor, and the green area considered to be basement. But in general, if you're looking at it, these are all basement areas. The only thing is the technical matter that creates all of this minor variances to be triggered. So if we go to the next slide, this is a section of the, of the proposed house, which, which as you see, it is really typical to the houses being developed in Toronto, and the North York area. We have the garage level, basement level, which is a bit lower than the garage, and then we have the first floors, which is sitting on top of the garage level and the second floor above that. There are a couple of things that you have to remember. If we lowering the basement in this proposal to, actually, it's, the actual number is zero point five meters. If you lowering it half a meter, then we, we are not going to have the minor variances number one, four, six, and seven, because all of those are related to this definition. As the definition defined the basement as a first floor, then the rear deck being defined as a platform. And the front platform, which is the landing for, for the porch, it's become a platform. So all of this, those things are being triggered. Also, the setback for the rear deck, which becomes a platform, is considered as a platform, triggered as well. So all of this kind of related to that portion of the zoning bylaw by defining basement as a first floor. Can we go to the next slide? Now, if you're looking at this slide, we clearly show that the wall height that we are requesting is only zero point three meters of the eaves trough being raised. And the reason for it is the owner would like to have flat ceiling on the second floor instead of having those angled and butterfly ceiling, as we call it, inside their, their space. Otherwise, they could have the roof with the standard compliant, and they're just getting angled inside the second floor. Also, by recommendation of the planning department, we added privacy screens on both sides. That's, that creates the privacy for houses sixty-two and sixty-six Glen Echo, which they are on the, on each side of this property. And based on the request of the, of the neighbors in the back of this property, we proposed to have protection for cedar trees, even though by forestry bylaw wouldn't even deal with those because they're not covered by the protection as, as based on the bylaw in the forestry. But we proposed to have a protection to the back to keep those trees safe for the neighbors in the back. And there are a couple of things that I would just want to mention. The FSI approved from previous times in the same committee, really close to this number that we are asking. Thirty Glen Echo got approval for zero point seven nine, and eighty and seventy-eight, they got approval for zero point eight six, and fifty-four Glen Echo got approval for zero point seven. The reason that the owner doesn't want to go lower with the basement, and all of this, like most of this minor variances being triggered by that decision, it's because of the risk of flood that's been happening in the area recently. And if we lowering the basement floor with another half a meter, we believe that's going to be a waste of energy to keep up that space warm and cool during the year, and also less natural lights, and also because we are close to the, to the other neighbors, we need to have shorting. So we eliminated all of those problems by just raising up the basement by half a meter, which, if the definition of the basement in the zoning bylaw was, wasn't changed, and we have done many of these houses with the same kind of elevation in North York area previously, and we had no problem, because the definition of the basement was, if the basement was lower than, sorry, zero point six meters, lower than the center of the road, they would consider it as a basement. But recently, this definition being changed and creates all of this problem. And that's why we're requesting all of this minor variances. So basically, the only minor variance that you're requesting here, if the definition of basement wasn't involved, would be the height and, and FSI. So if there's any question, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Committee members, does anyone have a question?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Marzinger.
Can you clarify how the change in the basement depth would affect variance number one?
Yes. If, if you lowering the basement, so basement would consider to be a basement, not the first floor, so the first floor that we have, it would be considered as a first floor, not the second floor. So then the rear deck would be considered as a rear deck, not a platform. So as, as soon as it defined as a platform, then the setbacks would comply, has to comply as a platform, not the deck, because the deck setback as bylaw is to follow the same setback as the house. Right?
That is correct.
So, because this, yeah, because if this deck is defined as a platform, then it becomes a different, it goes to a different category and has to follow different bylaws.
No, I think it's not correct. I think the two point five two is the height of the deck from the grate beside it that has to be applied to the setback of the deck. So what you're saying is different things. So the two, that's two different bylaws. I think what you're saying is, is different. I know, I know this bylaw, and it's not what you're saying.
I, I totally understand. The only thing I'm saying here is that the purple rear deck is one point six three meters from the west side lot line. It's supposed to be two point five two meters.
Which I understand, it's the same setback as the building, but there is another bylaw that says if the deck height is, as, if the setback, if the deck height, the difference between the deck level and the grate beside it is whatever, you have to, you have to follow that to the setback of the deck, which is different from what you just.
Yes, I totally, totally understand. The definition of this has been a platform. So if it was defined as a deck, then you're right. The height of the deck would actually make the difference. But here, it's considered as a platform, and because it's connected to the first floor, which we're saying, and now they're defining it as a second floor. So that's, that's why all of this happens.
No, that's not the answer.
I don't know if I answered it.
No, that's not the right answer, but I, I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Could you tell me the height of the privacy screens that you're adding at the request of planning?
One point two meter as per planning department.
One point two meters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? If not, we will move on to the residents. Is there anyone in the audience today here today that's here for this item? Sixty-four Glen Echo? No? Okay, online?
I'm here. My name's Scott Stevens. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Welcome. Go ahead.
I reside at forty-six Goffdale Road, and I'm here as a representative of the Teddington Park Residents Association, Chair of the Development Committee. So, Madam Chair and members of the committee, the application for this same set of plans was heard at the July eighteenth committee meeting and was deferred in part on the fact that the planning staff report recommended changes to the plans. However, as of the deadline for this hearing, October the seventeenth, and right up until today, we have not seen any revised plans. I am in possession of a staff report letter from Kiana Castro of City Planning dated October the eighteenth that restates planning's request that the plans be modified to reduce the FSI from one point zero seven, which is minor variance number five, to point nine seven, and that the maximum floor space, including the basement, shall be point seven three. And I should point out that even with an FSI of point nine seven, the applicant just explained that he has been talking to City Planning and has agreed to this. This application is far larger than the prevailing FSI's, not only on Glen Echo, but within the entire TPRA geographical area. So approving an FSI greater than a hundred percent sets a very dangerous precedent, and I don't believe is a minor variance. So on the basis of the fact that no plans have been submitted or changed or posted, the TPRA requests that the committee members refuse the application. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions of the president? No? Thank you. Next?
My name is Fred Peters.
And your address?
I live at sixty Glen Echo, sixty Glen Echo Road.
Thank you. You said sixty Glen Echo?
Sixty Glen Echo Road, right.
Thank you. You can go ahead and make your comments.
Excuse me. The matter was originally heard, and I believe, July. And at that point, it was deferred with two conditions. One, that the issue about the trees be addressed with the urban forestry department, which has been done. The second condition was that the proponent engaged in a consultation with the neighbors who had filed letters of objection to the proposal. On October the twenty-first, I received an email from the proponent asking me to join a, a short Zoom call to discuss the issues that had been raised by the various members of the neighborhood. That was three days before the hearing was proceeded back to the committee. And it was not particularly helpful in that we said, "You've not addressed any of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors in the original application." And his response was to say, "Well, what other concerns do you have?" And our response, quite frankly, was, "You were asked to have a consultation with the neighbors to resolve these outstanding issues. Now, three days before the hearing, you say, 'We're not changing any of the original plans to any substantive degree.' And my own view is that that does not demonstrate good faith in a consultative process." And so I, I filed an original objection, and my views are still there, and they're well-stated, I believe. But thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. We have another speaker?
Hi, good afternoon. Brian Boyd, can you hear me?
Yes. Could you state your address, please?
Yes, I live at sixty Teddington Park Avenue, which is located directly across from this property. So I look at the property every day. The concern that I have is, number one, the lack of consultation. You heard from the applicant here today that they are now prepared to reduce the size of the variance from one point zero seven to zero point nine seven. The first we heard of this, despite our attempts to engage with them, was when you heard it here this afternoon. As the, one of the previous speakers mentioned, this application will be the largest FSI on that street. The applicant has already shared with you that the average of the new builds is zero point seven eight. So as I think you can appreciate, zero point nine seven in the city staff report is itself a considerable increase over that. Focusing further on the city staff report, they asked that you consider a reduction of the one point zero seven to zero point nine seven, and that you place a further restriction, that the FSI excluding the basement be restricted to zero point seven three. We also have a concern with the front yard setback, which again relates back to the mass and scope of the overall application. The front landing area and porch will considerably extend further towards the street than any other property. And as you can appreciate by looking at the material the applicant has given you, what you have today is a house with a modest front yard and a city tree. And what we will have tomorrow is a paved-over front yard and clear cutting of all trees on the property. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. We have another speaker?
Hello?
Hello? Could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. My name's Lena Dobbin. I live at 19 Don Cliff Drive. My yard looks into the backyard of 64 Glen Echo. Thank you for returning to the application today. I would like to echo my neighbor Fred's comments about the lack of consultation. I wanted to speak to why consultation is important and why developers need to recognize the importance of projects that fit into a neighborhood, just as we, the neighbors, have to recognize the importance of thoughtful development and positive change. The neighbors were prepared to consult with the developer. I can only speak for myself. I'm very much in favor of new development, and there are great examples on Glen Echo Road of new development. And I just feel like there was no consultation, no opportunity to go back and forth and reach a consensus on what was good for everybody. My second point is substantive, and it goes to the FSI and the size of the rear platform. I don't pretend to understand the bylaws. I included that photograph of a platform that is, that was constructed at 30 Glen Echo. I think it was just scrolled by. The developer, or the developer's agent, has said that's really a deck. But if staff can just scroll back to that photograph, it's a similar type of build. That has, that's it. It's absolutely destroyed the privacy of the neighbors on both sides. I'm not on the side, and our neighbor Anna hopefully will be able to get on the call and speak to that. But with the size of that platform, with the fact that this house, it looks like a two-story house from the front, but as a neighbor at the rear, it looks like a three-story house with a very large protruding platform that kind of overlooks our yards. And because it goes so far back, it really is intrusive and encroaches on privacy. I won't go into all the FSI points that Brian and Scott have already spoken to, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Hello, my name is Anna Balvos. I live at 62 Glen Echo. I'm just a neighbor sharing the fence with the plan. I would like to emphasize on all the neighbors' comments. We must mention that neither the contractor nor the owner reached out to us until the last very minute before the deadline to submit their response. They did not contact us to discuss the concerns, which make it very evident that they were ignoring our concerns. One of the many concerns were preserving the trees, which have not been really addressed fully. We had a lot of back-up force, and we're still uncertain what's going to happen to the other trees, specifically on the front lawn. The proposed property remain massive and does not align with the other houses in the neighborhood. You could simply compare to the plan in the newly-built houses on the street or even by looking at the Google map. It is very clear that the suggested plan will be overextended on both sides, on the front yard and surpassing the line that all the other properties adhere to. The backyard will be also extended, blocking the natural light from reaching to the house, specifically the one I reside at, with the overlooking balcony. That will not only destroy the privacy, it will affect the garden. It will affect the future of this house, 62 Glen Echo. Any landscaping potential, any renovation or rebuild project, it will be completely destroyed. Like, the house will have to be extra massive to be able to get some sunlight. And that's not possible. Redefining a dinosaur, like a small thing, doesn't mean that it's the correct thing. The designer or the landlord, the owner, keep redefining stuff or just tailor the definition the way he wants, but that doesn't mean it's correct or it aligns with everything else on the neighborhood. It's just basically so massive and destroying any potential for the house I live in again, and destroying the light, the natural light, and the privacy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more speakers? That's it. Thank you. So we will go back to the applicant for his response to the comments that have been made by the residents.
Okay, so I'm just going to comment on this. First of all, Teddington Park Residents Associations, we sent a couple of emails, and we never got anything back from them, even for the previous time that we did the application. So we have sent an email, and we didn't get any response. Regarding to the neighbors, we responded to the request that they had. So Anna's house, which Anna, I think, is the tenant, 62 Glen Echo, we responded to save those two trees. So we are not asking to remove those two trees. So we're saving those. And in response to the neighbors in the back, we responded to adding protection for the trees at the back. So we responded to their comments. But if they're asking us to reduce the height of the eaves, I explained to them that the mass of the house is still the same. It's just the distance from the, for the wall height. It's not going to change anything on the mass. And in regards to the rear deck, as I mentioned, this is a rear deck, not a platform. The zoning examiner defining this as a platform. And in response to the member of the committee that asked for variance number one, if you're reading this, it's actually mentioning that this is a platform, and because it's closer than 2.5 meter to the side lot line, this minor variances trigger. In regards to Lynn, from one of the neighbors, their houses behind this house, they're, all of them, almost double the size of this lot. So I don't think that's going to be a fair thing to mention that the FSI of this house is too much, too much or too big, or the platform is too high. Because if they want to build their house in the back, they have the right to do the same thing, and it's going to be the same level, almost. In regards to Mr. Boyd's, I agree with him. 0.79 is the average approved FSI in this area. And we are asking for the same thing, even less. We're asking for 0.73. Because those houses, they got approval previously, before the definition of the basement changed. So they got the approval, and we are asking for the same thing. And we have these consultations with professionals, which is the planning department and the planner in the area. So they know better than us what's going on in the area. So they've been in the favor, and they asked us to reduce the FSI to 0.97, which we are agreeing. And they're asking us to add those privacy screens, which we are agreeing. We don't have any problem. And we did that. And also, in regards to Mr. Scott's, we are not increasing 100%. We are going from 0.35 to 0.73. So it's not 100% increase. So those are my responses. And if there's any question from the members, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the members? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. The application was deferred specifically for you to be able to meet with the neighbors. There's some question as to whether that took place. It says, "The people in the immediate area say it didn't take place." You said you had some back and forth, but it doesn't sound like that there was a genuine roll up your sleeves and deal with the neighbors, which was one of the reasons this was deferred. The other reason was to deal with the planning department, or, sorry, the forestry department. And I'm not at all clear what happened there. There's a memo here from forestry to your firm saying, "We're good to go back to committee." But what have you agreed to with forestry? What's different than when this was before the committee last time?
So in regards to the forestry, previously, we had requested four removals. So four trees supposed to be removed. And we reduced that to two. And even we proposed to the forestry that we can relocate that city tree. So they're saying that, okay, you can try it. Maybe it survives, and maybe not. But they're giving us that chance. And if it's not survived, then the owner has to pay to replace the tree for the city tree. In regards to the neighbors, yes, we had the discussion with them before and even recently. But they're asking to change everything. And if we're changing all of the requested things based on their request, there is no point to come back to the committee. So we understand their concerns, and we tried to as much as possible technically. And during this time, we have even relocated the house on the drawings. We changed some of this stuff, and technically, it wasn't working. That's why this happens. But we tried to bond to those comments that they had. That's why we are proposing those protections in the back and keeping those two trees on 62 Glen Echoes, not digging close to that. So we responded as much as possible, and even reducing those FSI numbers. So we are trying our best to come up with a solution with this. But if they're asking us to get rid of all the minor variances, then there would be no reason to come to the committee of adjustments.
The other question I have is, you indicated that you've modified variance five so that the maximum floor space index, instead of being 1.07, would be 0.97. But the other portion of the planning department's request is that the FSI excluding the basement is 0.73. Do you comply with that?
Yes. So that's what I'm saying. On the notice that the planning department sent out, they didn't specify it here, but they requested us. So we can ask the committee members, if they're wishing to approve this, to add that as an attachment or condition. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? No? Ms. Martin?
I have a question regarding... It looks to me like, first of all, can you tell me how high your platform is from the finished grade at the back? How high off the finished grade to the top, to the platform?
Let me, I have to measure it right here. If you give me one second, I will do that. Just give me one second. Here. So I'm just trying to mark this here, so I can give you the exact number. So the platform is actually 2.61 meters above the established grade.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious as to why you did not have a variance put forth that you're building a three-story versus a two-story? Because your basement is clearly halfway above grade, which would trigger a three-story. But, and that's why you have a platform at 2.6 meters high? To come up with the family room?
Yeah, the zoning examiner is defining it this way. So it's just, I believe it's internal definitions that they have. And they consider all of these typical houses that have been built in the Arctic area in Toronto, a two-story instead of three-story. But they're adding the square footage as the FSI for the basement. I understand your point, but that's how they're defining it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So let's go into committee? For any comments or a motion or both?
Any, I just want to mention, I just talked it over with the committee. I mean, the FSI is... If you just look at how much the building sticks out beyond all the other buildings surrounding, it's obvious that it's a much bigger footprint on the property than is characteristic of the street. And I want to ask your opinions on that.
I mean, I would agree with you. If you look at the site planning, you look at the buildings on either side, which are, I think, original dwellings. I did hear the applicant say that these lots are smaller than the lots in the, that some of the people who've spoken today represent. And so the FSI goes up automatically because it's a smaller lot. But you're right, there is a lot of coverage as well.
Well, it's the nature of the lot, right? That it's a smaller lot. So it doesn't automatically mean you can build a bigger home on the smaller lot just because there's other big homes in the neighborhood.
Correct. But if you're looking at comparables of what's been approved for FSI, I think the other ones that were mentioned, the 0.79, I believe, were prior to them considering the basement. So in this case, that's why I think planning's clarifying that the first and second floor FSI be limited to 0.73.
Where are those located? Because there isn't that many that poke out that far. There's only one 80 Glen Echo, potentially, which is a huge building.
Right. But they could be on the bigger lots, right? They're not necessarily on smaller lots.
Right, which is, well, sort of different, I guess, but not.
But if they're only considering the first and second floor on those other ones, and they're 0.79, that's still probably a bigger house than this, right?
Absolutely. Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it's something to carry on, that's all, right?
Other comments?
I agree with my colleague that it certainly, the house extends into the rear yard. I, I agree with my colleague that it certainly, the, the house extends into the rear yard much more so than on the other houses. But as, as you indicated, Madam Chairman, the applicant did indicate these lots are smaller. I think the issue is exacerbated by the rear deck, which is large. But it's also by virtue of the, what is the basement? It's really high up in the air, which is why the planning department has requested privacy screens. And, and I agree with them on that. I, I think with the conditions limiting gross floor area and with the privacy screens, this is acceptable. It's not necessarily, in my view, what you'd like to see on every lot. But I don't think it's poor development. And I think that there have been some attention made to try and meld it into the area. I'm much more concerned with the lack of communication with the, with the residents. I, I hold a very dim view of, of development that proceeds without proper consultation. And I'm very concerned that the residents did not appear to be consulted, at least not in a reasonable way in, in their view.
I was just going to add that there's no rear yard setback variance. There's no coverage variance. And to me, coverage is more impactful than FSI because FSI is internal to the building. So I just wanted to add those points. And I tend to agree with Mr. Nipfel. However, the, the consultation with the neighbors, although it's encouraged, it's not mandatory. So I think it's a bit of a dilemma that we have. But when we ask applicants on a deferral to consult with the residents, the expectation is that they will consult with the residents.
Madam Chairman, to, to move this along, notwithstanding the, the limitations on consultation, I'm, I'm not sure that there is a, a great deal else that could have been done, would have been done to ameliorate some of the concerns. I believe there has been a genuine interest to meet with forestry and with planning. So I, I'm inclined to move approval of the revised application with the revision altered to state not only that the floor space index is 0.97, but the floor space index excluding the basement is 0.73. That's not in what was presented, but it was requested by the planning department. I think with those changes and the screening changes on the rear deck, this actually fits in reasonably well, or as well as could be expected into the community. I would like to also indicate that the privacy screens that are shown on the, or that are on the east and the west sides of the rear deck are to be 1.2 meters in height and to be opaque.
Can we just clarify? I think you said 0.79 instead of 0.97 for the FSI.
Oh, my mistake. I thought, I thought it was 0.7.
It is 0.97, but I think you said 79. That's okay. For the first one, for the overall.
For the first one, 0.73 for the second.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, pardon me.
That's okay. Yes. So we have a motion. Do we have a second or?
I second that.
Mr. Marziani? All those in favor? That is carried? Oh, sorry, Ms. Martin, did you have your hand up? Okay, fine. Sorry, all in favor? Let's try that again. Opposed? Thank you. That application is, is approved. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, just to be, just to be clear, member Mark was opposed.
Yes. So 14 and 15 are deferred, which takes us to 16. Nine Hermit Court.
Good afternoon, noon again, Madam Chair.
Hello? Yes, could you state, let me just explain the application and then you can state your name and address if that's okay. This is an application for a two, new two-story dwelling with pool and ancillary, ancillary structure. The variances are front yard setback to platform, sorry, front yard setback, setback to a platform, lot coverage, size of platform, width of the vehicle entrance, percentage of front yard landscaping, size of platform at or above the second story. Coverage, yes. And then in terms of on file, we have survey plans, emailed revisions, revised plans, tree inventory, arborist report, transportation services memo, a letter of concern from Five Hermit, and a late planning staff report. Now, you can go ahead, applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Addison Melton Price, planner at Design Plan Services located at 87 Skyway Ave, Toronto, here on behalf of the owners.
Thank you. So we do have speakers on this one. So we will ask for a brief presentation. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Before I get into my presentation, I'd like to point out, we're making quite a few changes
Sorry, I forgot to ask that.
Several of them.
Just slipped my mind. So let's start with the public meeting notice and the changes you're proposing to make to it.
Absolutely. So I'll just go through them all sequentially. Variance one, the front yard setback, that has remained unchanged. Variance two, the front yard setback of the front balcony has been increased from 1.44 meters to 1.8 meters. Variance three, the side yard setback of that front balcony has been eliminated. Variance four, the maximum lot coverage has remained unchanged. Variance five, the area of the front balcony has been reduced from 17.23 square meters to 12.77 square meters. Variance six, the proposed width of all vehicle entrances has remained unchanged. Variance seven, the front yard landscaping has been eliminated. Variance eight, the area of the side portion of the front balcony has been eliminated. Variance nine, the area of rear balcony has been reduced from 44.98 meter squared to 10 meter squared. And lastly, variance 10, the proposed lot coverage has remained unchanged.
Thank you. So you can go ahead with your presentation.
Absolutely. So I will begin with variances one and two. These both pertain to the front yard setback, so I'll, I'll discuss them together. The front yard setback that is proposed is a result of the unique and irregular shape of the subject property. The subject property is a six-sided lot with each side being a different length, with none of the lot lines being parallel to any other one, and with multiple curved sides. It's about as far from a rect, a regular rectangle as, as you can get. For the purposes of the zoning review, and to our surprise, the zoning examiner selected what we considered to be a portion of the side lot line as the front lot line. I would point out that we had ensured that proposed massing, including the balcony, respected the side yard setback of 1.8 meters. That's where our 1.8 meter measurement from variance two comes from. Nevertheless, the front lot line has been indicated as the curve along the cul-de-sac, Hermit Court. And as a result, the proposed front yard setback is measured at 2.5 meters. I see staff has the site plan on screen, so that's perfect. I just want to point out the dashed curved line at the front, which indicates the required front yard setback. And note that the 2.5 meter figure only applies to a pinch point due to that curved nature of that front lot line. The remainder of the building is, is much closer to the requirement. I would submit to the committee that when there are several lot lines separating the property from the street, the lot line that is closest to parallel to the front main wall and the lot line that also crosses over the driveway is the one that will be perceived as the front lot line. And when viewed as I suggest, the requested front yard setback is 11.15 meters. In my opinion, this variance will have no more impact than a front yard setback variance of 11.15 meters. And community planning staff agree with this interpretation. And this is why there is a staff report recommending approval of the application as amended. Before I move on to the remaining variances, I just want to summarize that, in my opinion, the 2.5 meter number requested through this variance belies the actual impact of this variance. And the 2.5 meter setback will be perceived not as a front yard setback, but as a side yard setback. And the requirement for a side yard setback is 1.8 meters. Now, variance three has been eliminated. Variance four and variance 10 both pertain to lot coverage. Variance four at 26.14% pertains to just the main dwelling. And variance 10 includes the coverage of the proposed accessory building and the main building. The zoning examiner in reviewing this application chose to identify these as two separate variances. And we are proceeding with that format out of an abundance of caution. However, even when considering the larger lot coverage of 29.3%, the proposed dwelling is still well within the range of approvals in the neighborhood, as evidenced by approvals including but not limited to 28 Ufield Crescent at 31.13%, 10 Ufield Crescent at 32%, and 25 Ufield Crescent at 28.7%. Now, variance five pertains to the area of the front balcony. And it is, has been reduced, as I mentioned, to 12.77 meter squared. This balcony will be accessed through a bedroom three and two and is consistent with some of the approvals for balcony sizes in the area. The proposed balcony will face the street and will not face any neighboring lot. We've removed the side portion of this balcony, which means that there will be no privacy overlook concerns associated with this balcony onto the adjacent neighbor. Also, this balcony will be accessed through bedrooms and therefore will likely not have the same amount of activity as a balcony accessed through a common room in the dwelling. Now, variance six, as stated in the transportation report, this variance is of no concern to the transportation staff, provided that variance seven, the front landscaping variance is eliminated, and we have done so. The proposed driveway is now as of right, including the proposed landscaping. And as such, the addition of 1.41 meters of vehicle entrance width will, in my view, not have any material impact on the streetscape or adjacent neighbors. I'd also like to point out, as you can see on the public notice, that this variance is related to the front lot line issue. As, as stated on the notice, the requirement of a six-meter garage width is only triggered because the lot frontage is counted as less than 24 meters. But again, since the frontage is only being considered along Hermit Court instead of Ufield Crescent, the actual perceived lot frontage is quite a bit above 24 meters. And therefore, an increase in vehicle entrance width, in my opinion, meets the intent of the zoning bylaw. Now, variance seven, variance eight have been eliminated. So I'll just briefly touch on variance nine. It has been significantly reduced inside to 10 meters square. And the proposed balcony has also been shifted to the center of the lot, which will eliminate any overlook onto either adjacent backyard.
Thank you. Your time's up. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Anyone? No? So let's proceed to the speakers we have. Is anyone in the audience here for this item? If you'd like to come forward to the podium over here? Can you, can you first of all state your name and address and, and make sure the microphone's on?
Excuse me.
Your mic is not on? And Is it on now?
Yes, but we only accept one speaker per household, so
Okay, so we'll let my brother proceed then.
I was actually told I could go up and say
We have us, we have her brother online. She just wanted to say a couple of quick words. And I'll leave it up to you, Madam Chair, if you want.
Okay, sorry to make you walk back and forth.
Or they can split the five minutes too as well.
I'll be really quick. I, I just want to say there were a number of changes there. We prepared for what we received. We haven't received any of this information. So my brother will speak a few words, but I would really like to receive this information in writing. I, I could not follow everything.
Thank you. It's a lot to follow. All right, do we have the?
John Horvath.
Thank you. Do we have John Horvath on?
Hello, I think I just got unmuted. So I'm John Horvath. I live in California now. Those are my parents. I actually lived there 25 years ago for a short period of time at Seven Hermit Court.
Okay.
In the area. And again, there was a, can you see me or can you just hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Anyway, yeah, as my sister said, there was a lot of changes. And so I applaud most of those changes. A lot of those variances, especially the side balcony, was what was our primary concern off of bedroom number three. So that's great. And then the, the only remaining concern that I would like to kind of bring up is that because of the location of that, the very short side variance, and it's still, it's still very short and it comes up to the southwest corner of the lot, that's going to create, that's really going to obstruct the light onto my parents' front yard driveway. And you know, when they go to their house and they're not going to see the street anymore, right? They're going to see two stories, like an alleyway almost, on the left there on that driveway. And I don't, I really think that that's really not kind of what was, or it doesn't really fit into the neighborhood. You know, it's a lot of kind of larger lots with smaller homes, lots of greenery. And it seems the greenery is, is kind of being, is kind of being removed. You know, thankfully, the balcony is gone, but it's still going to create a light issue with the driveway, the front window and the, and the front yard with, with my parents' home. And then the other concern that we have was, there's just like a lot of pavers and really little landscaping in the front there. And my parents' home is, the basement's already been flooded twice. So there's some concern around that with so much, I don't know if it's concrete, asphalt, pavers, whatever, but not a lot of space up there. And it's really not that this is some kind of space constrained lot or the odd shape. It's just really trying to do everything. A, you know, a three-car garage, a pool, a deck in the backyard, a cabana, and then parking for the three-car garage. That's really, that's really the issue, right? So it's not a compromised lot. It's just they want to do everything with it and a pool and everything, and that's fine. But our concern is just that that front corner, go straight up two stories, has been shifted forward so much that especially in the wintertime, they really won't get a lot of light there because, you know, sun rises and the east sets in the west and it's on the south side of the sky. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. We have another speaker?
I believe that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So back to the applicant, unless there are questions of committee? Back to the applicant to respond to the residents' concerns?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, I'd just like to state that the variances that have been changed and eliminated was all provided to the committee through a zoning waiver signed by the applicant on October 17th. So that was prior to the material submission deadline and, you know, with a sufficient amount of time to, to review any of those changes. If there are any questions about what has been changed, I'm happy to go through more. But really, I, I feel the, the largest impact to the adjacent neighbor, the, the side balcony, has been entirely eliminated. The front yard landscaping variance has also been entirely eliminated. And the proposed landscaping, proposed is now compliant with the requirements in the, the zoning bylaw. With regard to the concerns about sun and shadow, I, I can't say exactly what the shadow impact will be as I have not prepared a sun shadow study. And I haven't had a chance to review any such study. What I will point out is the layout of the house currently doesn't, does not comply with the front yard setback as, as the house is existing. Furthermore, there is a hedge and a strip of trees along 22 Ufield Crescent that would already serve to block any view along Ufield Crescent. So in my view, this, this extension of the building would really not hamper your view any more than that hedge, which is already existing, would alter it. Furthermore, there's still an unfettered view into Hermit Court, which is where the, the property is situated and where it's addressed. In my view, not being able to view through someone else's property to something else, well, is an impact. else, um, well, is an impact, isn't a adverse planning impact that, uh, that rises to, uh, the level the bylaws is intending to, to, to meet. The propos, the proposed building will, will be two stories and will fit in nicely with the massing and, and existing physical character, uh, in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Given the concern with flooding in the area, and you have a very large driveway servicing your three-car garage, is it possible that that driveway could be serviced in permeable
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, a requirement from the committee, should they choose to, to require that.
Thank you. Oh, the other thing I'd just like to mention, um, perhaps for the person that was speaking to you, although there are a lot of changes in the application, all of the changes reduced the size of or removed the variances completely. So, um, it, that, I, I just, I don't know if that would give you some peace of mind, but there's nothing worse than what you saw. Um, everything is, in fact, better in terms of, of setbacks and coverage and so forth, and, and maybe that needed to be explained.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? No? So we'll take this into committee? For discussion and, and/or a motion, please?
I can start. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, uh, with the revisions, uh, that the applicant is proposing, uh, I personally think it's a supportable application. I agree that the lot frontage, uh, it's a very weird-shaped lot, and so it's hard to decide about which side is the lot frontage. But overall, with the amendment, I think it's a supportable application, and it meets the four tests, so I would be happy to make a motion, if my colleagues don't have any further comments.
Go ahead.
Yes, I haven't made a motion yet, but...
I don't think anyone else is, uh, dying to make a motion, so...
Okay, so, uh, I put forward a motion to approve this application as amended, uh, and also subject to condition of, of planning, um, staff, and also transportation, and with inclusion of the permeable pavers for the driveway at the front.
Do we have a second, or Mr. Nipfel? All in favor? That is unanimous and carried. Thank you. Your application is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, next we have item 1787 Chudley Avenue, which is an application to replace existing rear steps with a deck. We have variance for platform encroachment into the rear yard. And on file, we have the previous decision survey plans, a cover letter, and one letter of support from 89 Chudley Avenue. Do we have the applicant?
Yes. I'm Su- Susan Foster, and I'm, I live at 87 Chudley Avenue. I'm also the owner.
Thank you. I see we don't have anybody else, um, here regarding this item. So, um, unless you want to make any comments to committee, um, I think we can probably proceed. Does, do we want a presentation, committee? No? Okay. So, Ms. Foster, unless you want to say anything?
Sure, I'd just like to, yeah, I'd just like to clarify. Actually, there's also, a, a letter was also provided from, um, 85 Chudley as well.
Thank you.
Also, also raising no objection. And, because it is, it is, it's a side yard setback, a setback issue.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Are we ready to take this into committee? Yes? All right? Trying to bring up the... Ms. Martin?
I'm sure I can make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, approve this application, um, for a new deck to replace the existing, uh, set of concrete stairs, I believe.
Okay.
I don't think there's any conditions.
No.
No.
Second, or Mr. Marziani? All in favor? So that's unanimous? The application is approved. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Number 18. A lot of addresses. 831, 833, 837 Glen Karen Avenue, and 278, 280, and 282 Hillmount Avenue. This is an application to permit 24 obstructed or undersized parking spaces within the 10-story mixed-use development. We have variances for parking space length, minimum width for, and minimum width for a parking space. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, bylaw 616-2020, bylaw 617-2020, landscape plan, summary of parking deficiencies, and a transportation review memo. Do we have the applicant here?
Hi, my name is, uh, Michael Vanny. I'm a senior planner with Wesson Consulting, and I'm the agent on behalf of the applicant. And, uh, also, I'm joined by Volko Skokovec, who's also on the line. He's our transportation engineer. Should there be any technical questions at the committee?
And your address, Mr. Vanny?
Sorry, 201 Millway Avenue, Suite 19.
Thank you. Um, committee, do we, oh, first of all, are you making any changes to the application?
I, I just have a few comments related to the conditions from transportation staff that I'd like to address, but no presentation.
Okay, no changes to the variances?
No changes, no.
Thank you. Uh, do we want a presentation on this one?
No, I have a question.
Oh, no, we probably just... Yeah, that's fine. So, um, and we have some questions, but I, go ahead and speak to the conditions of the transportation services memo.
Thank you, and, uh, I guess thank you to committee. Um, we have submitted this application, um, to seek variances for a few, mainly of the obstructed parking spaces. And through that review, there are a few spaces that are slightly deficient of bylaw requirement size. Um, the building is almost complete, and this was identified through construction. These obstructions are due to, uh, minor pipes, structural or mechanical equipment, uh, which is commonplace during detailed construction phases that are minorly obstructing a few of the spaces. The, uh, development is expected to close on the units within about a month's time. Um, so we're almost at the finish line here. Um, what we did have a concern with the conditions, uh, from transportation staff was mainly, um, due to the indication that the spaces are compact vehicles only and should be signed as such. Um, the vehicle maneuvering diagrams and detailed design plan submitted by BA Consultants, uh, was included in the package, shows that all of the, the, all of the spaces, the obstructed and the undersized spaces, are fully functional to, uh, standard vehicles. Uh, they show vehicle maneuvering diagrams, door swing, uh, information, and the locations of all of the obstructions. Most of them are, uh, by only a few inches off. Um, they're not to be classified necessarily as a compact space only. Uh, many of the pipes are also in the corners of the parking space, so they are still fully functional. Um, and the vehicle maneuvering diagrams were done based on a 2020, um, Dodge Grand Cherokee minivan, so quite a large vehicle. And it, as you can see on the plans, uh, particularly, uh, page eight, uh, 13, and nine of the PLN-CA color plans, um, the vehicle maneuvering diagrams work for all of the spaces.
So I found those plans very helpful, I have to say. Um, they were really easy to read, and it was clear what was being requested. But are you saying that you don't think the conditions of transportation services are necessary because of what's been provided? Or is there a problem with complying with them? I, I'm not sure if these units have been sold and whether people know that their parking spaces are maybe slightly smaller than what's required? Because I think that's their concern.
Yes, so as transportation staff did, uh, comment on, they don't have any objections and have clearly indicated that the VMDs, uh, show that all of the spaces are functional. Uh, the spaces have been sold, um, as well as the units, and they are closing and occupying within a month's time. Um, we don't disagree with having to provide adequate, um, information to the purchasers. However, the signage and indication that these spaces are only for compact vehicles, we do disagree with, because they can sufficiently support a standard, uh, vehicle.
Thank you. We have a question for Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I wonder if the, if the concern is the term "compact vehicles." I, I can imagine that will cause insurance companies to be really concerned, because, uh, it probably puts the parking space into a different insurance, uh, ledger. I, I do think, however, that the side, the, the actual spaces need to be signed. I think there needs to be a warning, both to the purchasers and to the users, that these are smaller than normal parking spaces. And I think it is dangerous to, um, to enter them without knowing that they're smaller. And it's not uncommon. I, I've been in a lot of condominiums where there is a sign like this, and, to be quite honest, it makes you considerably care, more careful as you're parking your car. I, I don't agree, disagree, I don't agree, sorry, with removing the signage. I, if the concern is the term "compact vehicles," I could understand that, but I do think there needs to be a reference that these parking spaces are below standard.
I guess before you jump in to answer that, my follow-up would be, is there a problem with marking them as such? Like, what is your concern with that?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. I think it's, it's specifically that the identification of "compact vehicles only" uh, is technically not correct, that they be signed in that manner. They are, as I said, slightly deficient, some only by three inches in length. Um, and although they do not meet the requirement of a standard parking space, we are seeking these variances to rectify that situation. And we, we do agree that that has to be communicated, uh, to purchasers, but I think there could be different signage cues to indicate, uh, the size of the spaces versus compact vehicle only.
Sorry, what is, what is your option, then? Are you saying? What would you put instead of "compact"? Are, are you suggesting you could sign them differently?
We would say that we could put signs to say that the spaces are smaller. We, we, we do not like the term "compact vehicles only."
Okay. I mean, I, I've, don't think I've seen "compact." I have seen small cars.
It is noted in the conclusion...
Smaller vehicles.
...of the transportation report. I think it's, I think it's a good idea that you have that information for prospective buyers, because if I owned a Yukon and I thought I could park in one of these spots, that might not be, that might not work out.
I think the issue is to, to a prospective purchaser and also ultimately to a user, there needs to be some kind of an alert flag there that this is not a normal-sized parking space. Doesn't mean you can't park in it, but it's a little tighter than normal. So I think there needs to be a warning clause. And if you wanted to identify that there's smaller parking, parking spaces or sub, um...
Standard.
Substandard parking spaces, I think that's, I personally would support that. And I, and I can understand the term "compact vehicles" could come back to bite you, because compact vehicles to one agency is not the same thing as to another agency. And so I think the term is a problem.
If, if I can suggest, um, given the first condition is to the satisfaction of transportation services, can I suggest the rewording of the second condition that also say, "provide signage to the satisfaction of transportation services," and that can be determined as to what the exact signage has to state and the size, um, requirements that would meet that threshold?
Yeah, but I don't want them to now have to take some of these spaces off. I, I think if you left the locations here to the satisfaction of transportation services, the applicant will be required to, uh, include proper da-da-da-da-da and spaces are intended. And, and if, if it was to say that the, the wording of the, of the signage is to the satisfaction of the transportation commissioner, I think that's fine. Transportation services, that's fine.
Through you, Madam Chair. You, you can, but transportation has told you what their wording is preferred. If they say, if you leave it up to them, and generally, we don't like to leave it up to, if they have not. You, if you tie it per transportation or forestry, it is, you should tie it to what they want. You shouldn't modify the condition without their knowledge.
Then should we consider, um, should we consider a deferral so they can actually have this conversation with transportation?
I'll, I'll leave that up to you, but here's, my concern is, if they never come to agreement, this applicant will never get a building permit. And if, if it comes down to the word "compact," and that's the only thing transportation is willing to accept. Now, I, I presume this is very standard conditions? So I doubt, I, I, I can't say for sure if they are willing to modify the wording. I, I have no idea if they will. But I don't want to give a false impression that transportation will sign off on a condition, and the applicant will be able to move forward.
Yeah, I, I don't want to do that either. I, I have seen similar things without the word "compact," and I don't want to double-guess transportation either. However, I'm not voting in favor of this unless there's signage, and unless the owners are notified. I think that's absolutely critical. So my question is, do we put it in as it's worded and have the applicant come back for an amendment? If transportation, if he can't live with compact, I, I'm in your hands if you guys...
So through you, Madam Chair, there is no amendment. It would be a brand-new application.
Personally, I would leave it as it is with transportation's report. It's up to the prospective buyer and also the, the, um, developer to look into it further, look at the size of the parking spot, and make sure their car can fit.
But they've done the analysis, and they've provided that to us. They've got a report by BA Consulting saying that, you know, and they've tested a Dodge Caravan in it. So it's clearly not as substandard as it might appear. And yet, transportation services is requiring the signage as "compact." That's the complicating factor.
I guess the bottom line is, what is the impact? What, what is the impact?
I just feel...
That somebody will have to do due diligence just to make sure their car's going to fit?
Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, to say that, you know, it, it is, uh, critical that we don't, um, consider, you know, or, or assume what we think of transportation. And I, I think in this case, I'm more aligned with, uh, deferring the application so that the person, the agent, doesn't waste their money. But at the same time, I'm just sort of un- understanding that I'm not the expert at transport, and I do feel that they had had ample time, um, to be able to have this discussion before coming today with transport as well. So, you know, I mean, at this time, it's a best-case scenario for me would be differ or not approve.
If, if I, if I may add, um, just to kind of close the loop on this, um, if committee is unwilling to, to amend the conditions...
We are in committee? Are we, we're in committee? So, sorry, um, you can't speak during this time unless we come up... You can't speak during this time unless we come out of committee. So do we want to go out of committee to hear from the applicant?
He might have something important to say, sure.
Okay, so we'll go out of committee and you can carry on now, sorry. Carry on? Mr. Vanny, are you there?
Hello, sorry, I was still muted. Thank you, and I was not aware that we had directly gone into committee. All I was going to say is if committee is unwilling to amend the conditions, then we would like to proceed with them as they are written. We do not want to defer. We will accept them as they are.
Okay, thank you. There may be the opportunity for you to further discussions with them and see if you can change their mind on that. All right, so we will go back into committee now. And do we have a motion? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the transportation conditions. It's not uncommon to have construction activities alter what were planned to be the size of parking spaces. I understand that. But I do think that the owners and the users need to be warned of substandard parking spaces. And that's what this particular condition is aimed at.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Ms. Martin? All in favor? That's unanimous. Carried? Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you need a break?
Do we need a break?
No, we're not going to get done.
Five minutes?
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. We are back. And on item 19, which is 27 Creston Road, which is an application to construct a new dwelling. The variances are for platform setbacks, front and back canopy setback to the slot line, platform height above established grade, maximum height of front and rear exterior main wall height, height of main pedestrian entrance above established grade, and minimum side yards. On file, we have the survey, plans, forestry memo, supporting material, and eight support signatures. Do we have the applicant here?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Yes, this is Bomb Dot Ben Baghdadi from BBA Design Studio. I'm the architect and the applicant for this application residing at 13 Hollyberry Trail in North York.
Thank you very much. And do you have any changes to make to the variances today?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There are no other people here to speak, I don't believe, on this application. So do we need a presentation committee? No? No? Great. All right, so unless you have anything you want to point out to us of note, we do not need a presentation. There may be a question or two, but that's all.
I think it's a fairly straightforward application with similar applications or houses being built in this neighborhood and particularly on the same street as Creston Road with the reduced side yard setback and the platform are kind of minor. We just raised the sunken foyer that we usually see in the North York applications. In order to eliminate a couple of steps inside and have the same height throughout the first floor, it won't affect any height variances that we have. And we do comply with the overall height and the coverage and front yard landscaping. And also, the planning department has no concerns because they haven't sent any memo to the committee. If any of the members have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? No? Oh, Mr. Nipfel?
Just a quick one. I know I've got the answer somewhere in my notes, but I, maybe you can give it to me faster. There's a second-floor roof. And I'm... Is it a balcony? It just says "flat roof," second-floor plan?
It's the roof over the rear first-floor balcony. It's no deck, it's just a roof.
Okay, and it's just a Juliet balcony, right? You've got just a screen across the door.
Off the master bedroom, there is no deck.
Okay, so you wouldn't have any problem with a condition that said no access to the second-floor roof?
Absolutely not, unless this condition eliminate the rear door that we have in the master bedroom. It would be up to the examiner how to interpret this condition.
Okay, the other way of perhaps accomplishing that would be, is it possible for you to amend your plan to show that that's just a Juliet balcony, which is basically, it means you can't, you're not going out on it. It's just a screen across the sliding doors. And that's fine because it doesn't provide access to the roof.
Through you, Madam Chair. If you look at this elevation, if you can zoom in just to that middle door on the second floor, please. If you zoom in a bit more. Yes, I am showing a glass guard. The note is missing that it's a Juliet balcony.
Okay, could you add that to your drawing? Would you mind adding that to your drawing?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. That's all, Madam Chair.
Not a problem.
Any more questions for the applicant? No? So we'll go into committee for this? Any further comments or a motion? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a reasonable development, in my view. I think it's consistent with the character in the area and it's consistent with what else is being built in the area. I'd like to move approval of a subject to forestry condition number three. And the plans revised to show that the balcony from the master bedroom is a Juliet balcony. That, I think, is a term that most people will understand. It means there's no access to the flat roof.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Marziani? All in favor? That is unanimous. And carried, your application has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, committee.
Okay, we're on to item 2306 Brook Avenue. Sorry. Sorry, I'm just getting my notes here. Okay, so we have an application to construct a new detached dwelling with a pool in the rear yard. We have variances for height of side exterior main walls, building length, side yard setback for corner lot, lot coverage, driveway width, platform, front yard setback, vehicle access, rear yard setback for the pool, side yard setback to the pool. On file, we have survey, plans, presentation comparables, photos, arborist report, forestry memo, and a forestry advisory memo. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Murat Özgür. I am the agent of 306 Brook Avenue. My address is 231 Joyce Boulevard, Toronto.
Thank you very much. First of all, do you have any changes to make to the variances?
No changes.
Okay, thank you. We do have people listed to speak on this application. So... We do have people listed to speak on this application, so if you could provide us with a presentation, and you have five minutes to, to do that.
For the requested variances, is it possible for, for the one, yes, that one, exactly.
Sorry, just, just one second, pause. Sorry, just to the residents in the audience, the applicant will make the presentation, and then you can make your comments, okay? Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so requested variances regarding number one, which is the sidewall height, and it's normally, we are proposing to have seven point eight meters.
Sorry, sir, I have to stop you again. One of our panel members has indicated a conflict. Ms. Martin?
Yes, I have a conflict with, I know some of the representatives for this project.
Okay, so you'd like to step out?
Like to step out.
I'm sorry, sir. Maybe we can just start over again? Could we just reset the clock for the applicant? All right, now you may speak. Sorry.
Thank you. So, item number one is regarding the side, sidewall height, which is we are proposing to have seven point eighty-one meters, and it's just about thirty-one centimeters higher than the, that one that you can build. And regarding number two, regarding the building land, which is the existing house, because this is a corner property, the existing house is twenty-one point eighty-seven meters, and the proposed one is eighteen point nineteen. And this is like, you know, in the latest decisions of the committee in this neighborhood, you can see in my list that five one one Old Orchard Avenue has a land of nineteen point sixty-one meter approved on October seventh, two thousand twenty. And another one, one eighty-seven, Haddington, again, this is the very recent one, eighteen point forty-nine meters, which is approved on August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three. Regarding number three, which is again the side yards for the corner lot, our property is fifteen point seventy meters. Normally, a side setback according to the bylaw of a property like this should be one point five meters. Because we are the corner property, our side setback is three meters. And again, latest decisions on similar, exactly corner property, which is two fifty-two Brook Avenue, and that one is approved for one point two meters on July eighteen. Regarding number four, the maximum lot coverage, thirty percent, and we are proposing thirty-four point seventy-one. Again, in my presentation, you can see the similar houses that is built in this area, which is usually thirty-five percent and above. And also, the landscaping is not an issue at the front and at the rear, with the landscaping and the soft landscaping. And again, the similar properties on this area is such as three three, I'm just saying the same street. And three fifty block is approved thirty point point seventy-three percent, three forty-five block thirty-five percent, three forty-nine block thirty-seven point three. And the recent decision again, two ninety-three, Brook Avenue, is thirty-five percent, which is on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Regarding the number five, which is the driveway width, this is the driveway on our private site, and it starts with three meters on the front property lot, and then it widens to five point four-six meters, and we are protecting the tree at the front. And also, again, in all areas, is asked for landscaping or land, soft landscaping regarding this. Platform, again, this is the porch at the front, which is, east side is two point sixty-one meters versus three meter, again, is the same with the side setback. Number seven is vehicle access, which is not on the side road, but it's in the front of the property. Number eight is the swimming pool, again, at the rear end, it's again a corner property, and the, if, if when we look at the zoning, it says it has to be three meters. But why propose one point two meters? Because it also says in the zoning, if it's not a corner property, for example, if I was of this lot, then according to the zoning by law, the setback will be one point two meters. And regarding number nine, again, it's about the corner side, which is the setback, which is we are proposing to have two point sixty-one meters instead of two point seven meters. And this is exactly on the east side, and it's the corner side of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the applicant? Anyone? No? Oh, Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can you tell me what you're removing along the, I guess it's along the west property line, between the proposed deck and the property immediately, three, number three-ten? You've got XXXX, I presume that's, you're removing some planting material, is that correct?
Yes, it's bushes. There is some bushes over there, like a fence bush, that's the one that we are removing.
Why are you, why are you doing that?
Because when we excavate, it's gonna be, like, we have to excavate two feet, you know, to the side of the house, and we're gonna damage their roots, that's why we are removing. But we will, of course, at that, we're gonna plant some, you know, bushes around that area in order to have some privacy.
Okay, my question was going to be, because you're removing a vegetative line of privacy, would you be agreeable to put a, a privacy fence along the west limit of your deck?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No, thanks.
All right, I guess we can now hear from the residents that are here, and I'm sorry you've had to wait so long. So just make sure the microphone's on and say your name and address, please.
My name is Rita Silvestri, and my address is forty-nine Bannockburn Avenue. My property backs onto the applicant's property, so the rear yard is of concern to me. The pool setback he's proposing is sixty percent less than what's permitted, as my understanding. And I, I'm proposing that the pool, the pool setback be increased to at least two meters. And I'd like to know if there's going to be any soft landscaping along the rear yard or hard scaping. I'm concerned about water drainage and potential pool overflowing, which is a real thing with some of the rainfalls we've had. So that's the only concern that I have. I also have a pool, by the way, and it is well beyond that setback, with lots of soil and landscaping. It's over four meters.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions of the resident? No? If not, thank you. You can sit down, and we'll ask the applicant to respond to your comments.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Is there any other speaker, or, because if you want to go back to the applicant, I'd rather to ask a question now.
Oh, sorry, I, there is another speaker? Do we have them? Or no? Oh, they're here. Oh, no. No, one sixty-six, Haddington, Richard Van Dyne?
Oh, just supporting.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Marziani?
Yes, before we're going to the applicant, I also want to ask the applicant in regard with variance number eight, the pool setback, because it's just four feet from the neighbor's fence, what is his plan for privacy at that area? Because the pool with the boundary around it is gonna touch the fence, so I think it's, it's definitely affecting the neighbor's privacy at the back. So what is your plan for that area?
All right, Mr. Özgür?
Yes. At the back of the property, we're gonna have completely board fence, and in the front of that, still to have any plantations, which we are planning to plant cedar trees over there. And regarding the, you know, water drain, you know, that issues, the grading, you can see that the neighbors, the fans has an elevation of one hundred seventy-seven point ninety-four meters, and the front of the property is one hundred and seventy-seven point eighteen. So we have a slope towards the front, plus there is a slope towards the Klyde Avenue. So that the grading will be towards these parts, and there will be no issues with the rainwater or overflow of the swimming pool, there will be no issues. And yes, and the deck is again on the Klyde Avenue. Privacy, we're gonna, we are happy to.
So, sorry, is, is there a?
Plantations, cedar trees, anything.
So you have the board fence, and then you have, you say you're gonna have planting, but is there a pool deck within that one point two meters?
Pool deck? No, there is no pool deck there. It's just the plantation area. The pool deck is on the east side, towards the Klyde Avenue, and it's, you know, on the side plan, you can see, that's on the, the pool deck is on that side. Pool deck lines up with the swimming pool, you know, towards the neighbor, there is, you know, an area that is, is, you know, green area, still be cedar trees or any type of trees in order to have a privacy.
Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To the applicant, you, you haven't, in my view, made an argument for why variance number eight is needed. I, I don't see why the bylaw needs to change, and why you can't conform to the setback that the bylaw requires between the swimming pool and the adjacent owner. You say that you're going to put trees in there, but our experience has been that that's very hard to enforce, it's very hard to inspect, and the very nature of the pool, even if you don't put a, some kind of a deck there, people are gonna walk along that edge. I have not heard anything today that would convince me that variance number eight needs to be approved, and I had that in my notes before I came to the meeting. That was my very first point of view that I came to when I was reviewing your application.
Okay, yes, but like I say, because this is the corner property, that's why it is three meters. If it was, for example, number three one zero, if it was, that pool was built there, the setback will be one point two meters, according to the bylaw. That's why we, you know, ask these variants.
This is not related to corner.
And have some more green space between the house.
It's not about corner, it's about rear property line. So you need three meter setback from the rear property line, which we're, you're reducing it to one point two meters. It's not about a corner lot condition.
The side lot line is variance number nine.
Different thing.
Yeah.
And it affects the neighbors.
So the rear setback affects the neighbors, and then you heard the neighbors say that they would consent to two meter setback, even though the bylaw is three. But I just don't really think it's viable to be able to, you could accommodate the fence in that setback of one point two, but to have a fence and planting, there's really not enough area to sustain planting there. You may be shrubs, but not a tree. So can you comment on that?
If you are, if you are okay with the two meters, as the neighbor is proposing, is asking us to do, we will be happy to have a setback of two meters, if you are okay as a committee.
Any further questions for the applicant? All two of you?
No.
Okay, so we will take this into committee now?
I'm actually ready to make a motion.
Thank you, go ahead.
What, if, I, I, I think the one point two meter is definitely not enough to grow any, like, mature tree at the back, so I, I would put forward a motion to approve this application with amendment of variance number eight to be two meters, as applicant suggested, and also subject to forestry memo.
And would you consider friendly amendment of privacy screen on the west side of the deck?
Yes, and privacy screen on the west side of the deck, up to one point five meter.
Yeah, thanks.
From the floor of the deck?
Yep.
Okay, seconder? Mr. Nipfel? All in favor? That's three unanimous, carried. Your application has been approved as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do these people know what we did?
Yes, I think they understand. You understood what was approved?
Yes, I did understand.
Perfect.
Approved one, two meters.
Yes.
Minimum.
Yes, correct. Thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay, item twenty-one. One oh seven Wanless Avenue. Ms. Martin, you can come back if you're, if you're within hearing distance? That's okay. All right, so item twenty-one, one oh seven Wanless Avenue. This is an application for a third floor addition and a rear balcony to an existing house. The variances are for floor space index, roof eave encroachment, roof slope above the second story. On file, we have the survey, plans, zoning waiver, supporting material, a petition of support from one eleven, one ten, one oh one, and one hundred Wanless Avenue. Do we have the applicant here?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chairs, member of the committee. My name is Vinnie Luxon, located at eleven seventy-four Weston Road. I'm the owner's agent for the requested minor variances for one oh seven Wanless Avenue.
Thank you very much. And just to start, do you have any changes proposed to the variances?
No, I do not. The only quote-unquote change would be for the roof eaves. On my, on the initial application, the, the proposed roof eave was encroaching slightly into city's property, because we're simply replacing what's there. But seeing, I've spoken to planning and to mitigate that, I've reduced the overhang of my building by one inch, therefore eliminating any encroachment into city's property. So the, the variance you see there, didn't change. All that it changed is that I no longer need to acquire an encroachment approval.
So just to clarify, the, the notice that we're looking at, which is the, listed as the revised public notice, the variance number two, roof eaves may project a maximum of point nine meters, provided they're no closer than point three meters to the lot line, and the proposed roof eaves project point four three meters, and are located point two five meters from the east lot line and zero meters from the west lot line. Is that?
Yeah, so those numbers. Yeah, so those numbers are indeed correct. But that note you see at the end, that I will be encroaching, that is no longer the case.
Okay.
So if you take a look at my zoning waiver, you will see that I've crossed it out because I've, I switched my overhang to be 11 inches only.
So does that affect the wording of variance two? No, okay. And do we have to deal with the note? Okay.
That's if so, don't, there you go. So those are my.
Thank you.
Zoning waiver, sorry, actually.
I'm just confirming with staff if there are any requirements to change anything. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just to check, you've got a third floor platform, quite a substantial one. Do you not need a variance for that?
No, we're compliant within our lot. We're R only, and R, we have no size restriction for balconies. I am, however, mindful of privacy, so, which is why we're proposing to add the privacy screens on both ends of the balcony.
Okay, but you're sure there's no size provision in the bylaw for this, though?
No, size provision for balconies would be for RD, which is four square meters. Because we're R only, that there is no size restrictions for balconies.
Okay, thank you.
I find that odd myself, but it is what it is.
And you're putting privacy screens on the two sides, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions of the applicant? If not, we'll go into committee for any comments or a motion. I would note that they do have the support of the neighbors who seem to be in proximity of the application. Appears they've consulted with them.
Through you, Madam Chair, I can make a motion. I think it's a straightforward application. I think it's supportable. And with the amendment that the applicant is proposing, I put forward a motion to approve as amended variance number two, and also with inclusion of the privacy screen for third floor deck up to 1.5 meter. And there is no further condition.
Just to confirm, there is no amendment to variance two. I think he, I think it was amended.
Zoning waiver, I think she's making, he's making some changes.
He's making some changes, but I think they're reflected in the variance that we have.
It's only the note that the applicant had talked about. The wording itself and the numbers don't change.
Okay, so as is then.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Nipfel? All those in favor? That's unanimous, carried. This application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to 22. What do I know about 22? Okay, 22 is 10 Lacewood Crescent, which is a proposal for a two-story detached dwelling. The variances are for side yard setback and lot coverage. On file, we have a survey, plans, arborist report, tree protection plan, community planning report, revised plans, revised requested variances, an updated zoning notice, a letter of concern from 45 Groveland Crescent, and six letters of objection from 815 and 53 Lacewood Crescent, 3743 and 49 Groveland Crescent. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, Madam Chair. I am here as the agent of the applicant, Addison Milne Price, Planner at Design Plan Services, located at 87 Skyway Ave, Toronto.
Thank you. Just before we start, do you have any changes to the application to make?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. And I just want to clarify, just so that I avoid any confusion. This will actually be the second set of revisions. We have sent in a plan on October 22 that modified the variances initially, but the members of the public and planning staff were still not satisfied. And then, as a result, we've revised the plans a second time. And so the final variances that we are proposing is that variance one is eliminated. Variance two is remained unchanged, but I'll discuss that in a little bit more detail during my presentation. And variance three has been reduced from 43.89% to 34.81%.
Okay, thank you. We do have people to speak to this application. So we'll ask you for a presentation. You have five minutes, and you can start anytime.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair. So variance one was eliminated. I'll then start with the variance two, which is the west side yard setback. We're requesting a side yard of 1.22 meters, where 1.8 meters is required. That represents a difference of 0.58 meters from the permission set out in the zoning bylaw. I want to point out to the committee, though, that although the numerical value of this variance has not been altered through our revisions, the plans have been changed such that over half of the walls do now comply with the 1.8 minimum. This was a change that was informed by both the planning staff report, which stated that examples of side yard setbacks in this neighborhood are typically only found with a variance on one side of the dwelling. Planning staff also pointed out that side yard setbacks can help maintain the character of the neighborhood. And so by providing 1.8-meter side yard setbacks at the front of the house on both sides, I feel that we're providing a front facade that's compliant with the zoning bylaw from the front and will be consistent with the character of the neighborhood when viewed from the street. Now, several of the objection letters also pointed out concern for where garbage bins and other items such as air conditioners would be stored and implemented. And I'm confident that the revised plans and setbacks will be able to accommodate the storage of such items on either side of the dwellings now. I note that the adjacent building to the rear, 43 Groveland, has a side yard setback of 1.33 meters. And there are also several examples of similar side yard setbacks, ranging from 1.2 to 1.5 meters along Lacewood Crescent, indicating that this additional 58 centimeters of massing on the west side will fit in with the surroundings of the neighborhood. Variance three, the last variance, pertains to lot coverage. The proposed lot coverage has been reduced by just over 9% from the original proposal in response to statements made by the neighbors, planning staff, and the counselor. The lot coverage is now 34.81%, which translates to about 194 meters squared, where 30% is required, which translates to 167 square meters. That represents a difference of just under 27 square meters compared to the lot area of 557 square meters. Just for reference, the existing building on the property is approximately 29% lot coverage. If you took a site visit, you may have noticed that much of the building is boarded up. This is because there was a fire in the house. And as a result, the family of 10 Lacewood is currently living in a temporary living situation and have decided that now is a good time to proceed with a new home rather than doing the costly repairs to the existing house. The additional lot coverage that we are proposing is essentially triggered by adding the two-car parking garage along with the office at the front of the dwelling. I would also like to point out that the building steps back from the street, which is a factor that is not represented in the variance as lot coverage only concerns itself with the ground floor, floor space. But the step backs certainly reduce the impact of any massing that we're proposing. In addition, the proposed lot coverage is now consistent with lot coverages that are found within this neighborhood, including but not limited to 49 Lacewood Crescent at 33.4%, 52 Lacewood Crescent at 34.5%, 125 Three Valleys Drive at 40.86%, 4 Kestrel Lane at 33.9%, 66 Lurbe Crescent at 34.26%, or 77 Lurbe Crescent at 34.6%. Lastly, I'll sum up by stating that aside from the aforementioned side yard setback, which now only applies to less than half of the west side of the building, this proposal is compliant with all required setbacks to adjacent lots and all soft landscaping requirements have been met by the proposal, indicating that this building will provide a suitable amount of amenity and green space to the neighborhood. That completes my presentation, but I'm happy to take any questions from the committee.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any questions from panel for the applicant? No? So let's move on to the residents who would like to speak.
Hello, I'll go first. My name is Nancy Ewen. I live at 49 Groveland Crescent. I filed two objections with respect to this proposal, one on October 17 for the original plans and one on October 23 with respect to the revised plans. In my view, the requested variances at that time were not minor. They impacted four adjacent properties because there's two rear properties, two properties at the rear that find under Groveland Crescent, and that the proposed development in both cases was neither gradual or sensitive to the existing development in the area. And so I felt it failed the foretest. My frustration now is that now there's a third set of plans, and I can't see anything being posted on the website. And I'm out of town, so I'm dialing in. So it's very difficult as a local resident to be able to assess what's going on if you don't have copies of the plans. And I do have a real concern about that because as a local resident, I think you need to have time to review and assess. There was no discussion with the owners at any point in time. And you have to remember that the local residents don't have a right of appeal. And because we don't have a right of appeal, I mean, it further exacerbates the situation. So I think it's just patently unfair, and it undermines and frustrates the whole process. And I appreciate that there's, you know, being a willingness to work, but it's very late in the day with no access to plans. And so I can't say one way or the other because there's been no opportunity for, I think, the public to look and see what's being proposed. It was bad enough when there was only two days' notice, now there's no notice. I don't know if any of the other local residents online want to voice any concerns as they have. I mean, I just can't see it. So I don't even know what I'm being asked to, to, you know, for an opinion on. It's one thing to say 34%, you know, it's nice to be able to see it, 34.81%.
Okay, we will hear from the other residents, but perhaps the applicant can verbally describe the changes to the house that have been made to come up with the remaining variances. So variance one has been eliminated, the east yard, side yard setback. So that's going to be maintained at 1.8. But perhaps he can address that. But first, we'll hear from the other residents. Okay?
Hello?
Hello.
Madam Chair, committee members, my name is Vera Straka, and I'm a board member of Donnells Residence, Inc. And I filed the objection, objection notice to the former application. I have got similar concern, which Nancy Ewen stated. We have seen, and we have seen set of plans which was posted on Tuesday, and there were changes. There are no marks on the drawings which would indicate what were the changes. So that's, that's problem. Now we have got yet another changes. It was not clear how the reduced, reduced floor area was achieved. So we have got concerns still about the coverage. And I think this application should be deferred with the new set of drawings. The applicant or person who spoke on the behalf of the applicant mentioned landscaping. If I look at the latest set of drawings which we see, there is front yard landscape, rear yard landscape. Total area is always a total rear landscape, rear yard landscape area. So I don't know what we're looking at. And to start with, the pool area, for example, is incorrect. So we concern about the, about the amount of landscape which will be, which will be on the lot. So it looks that there's a lot of landscape, but in fact, there is a statement that existing landscape will be retained. I find it hard to believe that there will be no damage to the landscape along the front, rear, and, and backyard because there is a construction of the pool. Concern is the pool is also very close to the adjacent properties, 1.2 meters away. Again, the area designated for the pool, its overall area, it doesn't look that there is any paving or pool house included. So I'm just wondering, where is the equipment? And how the circulation along, I don't know, how many, four sides or three sides of the pool, how that will be achieved? Because that significantly will reduce the landscaping. And the concern with the pool is also there are two, two mature trees which are impacted, which are on the neighbor's property. It's number six and seven, silver maples, which will be injured as well as one tree in the front yard, which is also silver maple. There will be one tree which will be removed due to construction. So we concern that the area of this neighborhood has got typical range of coverage of 120 square meters to 170 meters, but those are bungalows. Now, we're looking at this particular property having 333 square meters on two floors plus has got basement, the front room at the basement has got light wells or has got full light access. So we have got lots of prime space. So why there is necessary to have the excessive coverage? But I just would like to see the drawings which would indicate how this was achieved and drawings which are marked what changes were made to say the original set, because that's the set we looked at. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And do we have Helen Han?
Yes, hi, I'm Helen Han, and I'm at 8 Lacewood Crescent.
Thank you, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to voice my concern as well with the last-minute plans. I do appreciate that accommodations have been made, but it doesn't give us a lot of time to review in detail what the changes are. However, the side lot allotment on the west side, which is the side that borders my property, is still a concern. I know it's only half of it now is 1.2, which is two feet shy of the 1.8 requirement. However, is there any way to make that 1.8 all the way down? The bylaw is in place for an obvious reason, I'm sure, and it would be nice if they could accommodate that. The lot coverage, which would have translated to drainage issues possibly, has been reduced to 34%, I believe I heard. Sorry, it was just a verbal, so I wasn't sure if that's what I've heard. But I understand that other properties on that same street has not been approved for even less lot coverage as per John Burnside's note. Last, oh, and I also wanted to bring to your attention the integrity of the petition that was signed. The three, of the three signatures, one of them is a homeowner in the area, the others two are not. One is an exchange student, the other one is a rental tenant. Lastly, I just want to ask about the trees, as Vera had also mentioned. The damage to the tree directly behind them, there is concern from that particular neighbor with regards to the size of that tree and if anything does happen. and if anything does happen to that tree, which already indicates that there will be some injury to it and also to the hedges on my side of the property. If those will be taken into account, the health of those hedges, they are older cedars and they're quite tall. We'd like to maintain them in working order. And if that is going to be accommodated when they should put up fencing or anything like that in the near future. So based on that, if you make accommodations for those variances, I would very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Is that all the residents? Thank you. So if we can get the applicant back. And your challenge here is to, because of the late changes to the plans and the reductions in the variances, are you able to explain to the residents how you were able to achieve the reduction in coverage, which I think is probably the biggest impact? And I would say that that was planning staff's biggest concern as well. And then the other comments that the residents made about the trees, the shrubs or the cedar trees, I believe, on the west property line, the setback to the west property line, and anything else that you noted during their comments?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I'll go through all of those sequentially. So I generally prefer to make as few changes to the proposal as possible after the material submission date. But we did feel that, given the response from planning staff and the neighbors that we've received earlier this week, I'll note that the counselor letter was only uploaded to the AIC yesterday. We felt that further reductions to the variances were necessary. I'll note that the plans are currently available on the AIC. They are available online in the same manner that you would access them regularly. But I'm happy to go through the ways we reduced the coverage because it really was quite straightforward. Originally, the proposed length was fifteen meters, and we reduced the building length by thirteen meters. So essentially, the building is now farther away from the rear setback. And we also reduced the coverage by reducing the side yard setback on the west side. Now, in terms of entirely eliminating the side yard setback, I'll just point out there's quite a few side yard setbacks in the area and along lacewood crescent, such as six lacewood crescent that has side yard setbacks of one point three meters on both sides, thirty-two lacewood crescent that has a side yard setback of one point two-one meters, forty-nine lacewood crescent that has a side yard setback of one point two-four meters, fifty-two lacewood crescent that has a side yard setback of one point two meters. So really, this side yard setback that we are requesting is quite consistent with what you'll find in the neighborhood. And moreover, the fact that when you view this house from the street, you will view a one point eight meter on both sides, in my view, means that the impact that this dwelling will have on the street that you would view it from will be no more than what you would expect from a zoning bylaw-compliant building. Now, with regard to the comments about landscaping, perhaps one thing I can just clarify is that the intent of soft landscaping really is to ensure the infiltration of water. There are other ancillary impacts, such as ensuring the adequate amount of open space and green space. But one of the main reasons for this portion of the bylaw is to ensure that water can be infiltrated into a property. And for this reason, the zoning bylaw considers swimming pools to be soft landscaping. So that's why when you view the site plan, it may seem like we don't meet that fifty percent soft landscaping requirement in the rear yard. But a zoning examiner employed by the Building Department in the City of Toronto has confirmed that we meet the soft landscaping requirements and the landscaping requirements on both the front and rear site. And that was on the version of the proposal that was larger and was built closer to the rear lot line. With regard to the signature of petition, I'll just note that the signatures were obtained by a person currently occupying the unit. Of course, it would be good to have the signature of the property owner as well. But in my view, the support of somebody who currently lives in the unit and who will actually experience this on a daily basis is also quite important to keep in mind that there are three people on this street who have signed off on the version of the lot coverage that was higher than what we're proposing now. Lastly, with regard to the proposed damage to the tree, I'll point out that, in my view, the injury to the rear yard tree is not something that's related to any of the variances that we're proposing. We're not proposing a rear yard setback variance or length variances that's causing the building to damage or injure any of those trees. There will be work that goes on that may injure these trees, but our arborist will work with the Urban Forestry Department of Toronto to ensure that the trees stay up because the trees do provide a very positive benefit for not just the adjacent owners, but the owners of the subject property as well. Now, I believe that addresses all of the concerns that were brought up, but I'm happy to go over any if I missed it some.
Sure. There was one question about where the pool equipment would be located because there's no, there's nothing indicated on the site plan. Do you have any idea where that might be?
That, sorry, Madam Chair, that has not been confirmed yet. My inclination is that the pool equipment would likely go to the right of the basement walkout. But that's something that would be determined once the building permit application would go through.
Okay, I think the concern was that it would be within the soft landscaping area surrounding the pool, and that was a concern. Okay.
Understood, Madam Chair.
All right. Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Just a quick question. Can you restate the lot coverage that you're proposing? Because what we have in the package is thirty-nine point seven-five. So you're going below that, right?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is correct. The version of the plan that was sent in yesterday to the Committee of Adjustment requests a lot coverage of thirty-four point eight-one percentage.
Quite reduction.
All right, anything further? No? Let's go into committee for discussion and motion. Mr. Marzighari?
Chair, I think with the revision that the applicant is proposing, it's a supportable application. I think the best side yard setback removal and also the change on the east side to, so the variance is just at the front. And also with the significant reduction of the lot coverage to thirty-four point eight-one, I think it's a supportable application. I would be happy to make a motion to approve this application if my colleagues don't have any further comment. No, I'm just asking my colleagues if they don't have any comment, I can make a motion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this application as amended. Do I need to restate the amendments? That is correct. And do we have any other condition?
I'm just wondering if we should make it, I guess, I was going to suggest consistent substantially in accordance with the site plan, but it's, I'm not sure.
For the west side, I think it's not in the planning report, but I think that's a change that is reflected on the site plan, so I would tie it to the site plan.
But just for the west side, because the east side's been altered and we don't have the plan?
Yeah, I just want to quickly mention, if he's changed the coverage substantially, it's gonna...
It's gonna be awkward.
Yeah, so I don't think you can tie it to, unless there's a new plan there.
All right, so then I wouldn't tie that to the site.
All right, do we have a second or Mr. Nipfel? All in favor? That's unanimous. Carrie, your application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we are about to start the four o'clock session. Yes, a quick, just to switch over our agendas, and so a five-minute break. Thank you.
And you have the same, how many of the same conversations? Right. Yeah, right. Yeah. All right, do we have the last question? Basically, the, it's going to switch up the handles. So if your model is similar to the same people, but it means... Okay. But then you have to, off too long to... I don't... I know where I'm saying. It's more, you know, it just... It's more like, I know it's a lot. All right. Ten minutes, I don't...
So this, we have that's item, you know, for...
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Are there any deferrals for four o'clock? No? Okay. So we will start with item twenty-three, two fifteen Shaughnessy Boulevard to construct a new dwelling. We have variances for front yard setback, side yard setback, driveway width, area of platform at or above a second story, and lot coverage. On file, we have survey, plans, planning comments, and site photos. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm Chen Shu, John Architect, we represent the owner.
Thank you. And we have the owner, but we have no other speakers. So first of all, do you have any changes to the variances that are being proposed?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Do we want a presentation panel? No, we do not want a presentation. So unless there's something you want to say, we will see if there's any questions and otherwise, we'll proceed to committee.
Yes, thanks, Madam. Yeah, basically, the minor variance mainly because of the irregular shape of the lot, and then they all are minor.
Okay.
I'm glad to talk about your questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the applicant? No? All right, let's take this into committee. For a comments or a motion? Anyone? Oh, Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to bring forth the motion to approve the application without condition. I, I think it's a very straightforward application. Uh, my only regret is that the existing house is being torn down. It is also quite a lovely home. Uh, but I think that the variances are very reasonable, um, uh, very minor. And, uh, I think what is proposed is appropriate development for the area, and, uh, I don't believe that there are any negative implications to approval, so I'd like to recommend approval without conditions.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Ms. Martin? All in favor? That is unanimous. Carrie, your application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Twenty-four, uh, one twenty-seven Dunblane Avenue. This is an application for a new two-story dwelling. We have variances for main pedestrian entrance, lot coverage, number of stories, height of side, exterior main walls, number of platforms, encroachment of an architectural feature, area of platform at or above the second story. On file, we have the survey, plans, photos, forestry memo, and a letter of objection from one thirty-one Dunblane. Do we have the applicant here?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee members. This is Faraz Puyande. I am the applicant and, uh, agent for this, uh, proposal.
Thank you. Could you just repeat that, your name and address, because it was a bit faint at the beginning, the sound?
Uh, sure. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee members. Uh, this is Faraz Puyande. I'm the applicant and agent, uh, for this proposal. The address is one oh five Harrison Garden Boulevard, unit five fifteen.
Thank you. Um, first of all, do you have any changes to the application?
Uh, no, uh, there is no any changes.
Okay.
No changes.
Do we, uh, there's no one else here to speak to this application? Um, do we need a presentation? No? So it seems like the panel is not wanting.
Perhaps, uh, perhaps a, a brief explanation of, uh, why the basement is considered first floor, uh, that type would be great.
Sure. Did you hear that?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, you know, uh, there is a new bylaw, uh, from last year, I think, uh, that, uh, if the mid of the basement is, um, uh, this is not my, uh, application, sorry, these are not my plans. Yes, uh, thank you. If, if please go to the section, uh, I, I think it's gonna be on, uh, sheet number nine or ten. If the mid of the basement is, uh, higher than the established grade, uh, the basement, uh, considered as a, uh, first floor, and because of that, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, for example, uh, two more variances for this application. For example, item number three, uh, is regarding the number of stories. Because of this one foot thirty-three centimeters above established grade, this building considered as a three-story, but based on the old bylaw, this is a two-story. Uh, and as a result, we have two more variances, item number five and seven, uh, that consider, uh, the platform, the deck as a additional platform, but the zoning, uh, just, uh, let us to have one platform. If we approve this, uh, variance, the, uh, various number five and seven, uh, is gonna be resolved consequently. Yeah. Any other, uh?
Any other questions? Mr. Nipfel.
Can you tell me if you've got any proposal for, um, screening of the deck to the west side?
To the west, okay.
Did you get it? You're, you're requesting, if I'm reading it correctly, you're requesting a larger deck, larger platform, and it's adjacent to another home and it has a direct view into their garden.
Uh, I think that deck i- is almost in the middle of the building. It's not, uh, uh, no. Uh, we can, uh, we can add a, uh, privacy screen on the side that has, uh, that adjacent to the neighbor. To fix this.
Yeah.
Yes, on the west side.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? All right, we'll take this into committee. Mr. Marziani.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any concern with this application. I understand that the, the reason of, uh, some of the variances is because of the new definition of the basement, and, um, so I think the variances meet the four tests, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with inclusion of the privacy screen on the west side of the rear deck up to five feet and also subject to forestry memo, which can, which number could be. It's, um, condition number one and two.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Nipfel. All in favor? That is carried. Your application has been approved.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, item twenty-five, fifteen Redfern Avenue. This is to remove an existing garage and shed and construct a one-story garden suite atop of the proposed one-story garage. The variances are for vehicle access to parking spaces and the forty-five-degree angular plane provisions. On file, we have survey, plans, supporting material, uh, revised drawings and presentation, community planning report, a late transportation memo, four form letters of support from eleven and seventeen Redfern Avenue and sixteen and eighteen Tompane Street. Uh, do we have the applicant here? Mr. Winter.
Correct, yes. My name is, uh, Matt Winter of Winter Studio, and I'm the applicant and architectural designer, uh, responsible for the, uh, design. My address is eighty-eight Glen Davis Crescent.
Thank you. And first of all, do you have any changes to make to the application?
I do not, no.
Great, thank you. Do we need a presentation?
No.
No. All right, we do not think we need a presentation, um, unless there's something that you want to point out to the committee, we will just take this into committee to review and make a decision.
Um, maybe just a quick comment on, on the two bylaw items. So the, uh, proposed driveway extension to meet the, uh, location of the garage and garden suite, which, uh, it looks like the transportation department, uh, showed their support for, uh, it's just a partial driveway extension. Um, and then the second item concerning the angular plane, um, just had to do with maximizing the usable open floor space area, um, particularly not having to, um, have that angular plane that would cut into usable floor space area, um, which the, um, clients, parents are intending to occupy and, uh, and are experiencing some degrees of mobility. So we're wanting to have as much open floor space area for them, um, as possible.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
No? Okay, let's take this into committee. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I think this is quite a straightforward application and, and a really well-done one, I might say. Uh, I'd, uh, like to propose that the application be approved, subject to the planning condition that is, uh, to build, that the application is to be built substantially in accordance with the south elevation drawing. Uh, it has the support of, uh, the neighbor next door, uh, number eleven. Uh, the, um, proposal is, is modest, um, and, uh, I think makes a great deal of sense. It's very compatible with the area and clearly meets the four tests.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Mr. Marziani? All in favor? That's unanimous. Um, the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item twenty-six is one eleven Bridgeland Avenue. This is an application to remove a portion of the existing commercial building and construct a new showroom to facilitate, uh, the conversion to a new Nissan automotive retail sales and service facility. The variance is for, uh, parking spaces and loading space. Sorry, just double-checking here. Yes, the only, the two variances. Um, on file, we have a survey, plans, community planning staff report, transportation services report, and site photos. Do we have the applicant here? Mr. Ziegler? Yes?
I'm, I'm here, but I'm muted.
Nah, not anymore. We can hear you. Um, first of all, do you have any changes to make to the application?
Uh, no, it's, it's Richard Ziegler, Richard Ziegler Architect, thirty-nine Polson Street, and I just wanted to comment on, on the, the two variances required and how they apply to the proposed use.
Probably a good idea.
Uh. Yeah.
You have, um, we have a, a neighbor in attendance as well, so, um, if you could give us a brief presentation, that would be helpful.
Certainly. Um, we're proposing to convert an existing retail slash warehouse facility, attire, attire, storage, and tire installation, uh, retail dealership. Uh, and we're gonna convert it into a, a car dealership with, uh, automotive servicing as well. Um, in order to do that, we're gonna repurpose the front end of the building, and in doing that, we're gonna reduce it subtly in terms of the overall, uh, length of the building. So the footprint's shrinking, uh, the front portion is a little bit larger in terms of height, but it's still within the bylaw requirements. Um, the, the plan, uh, isn't changing much, other than this, the slight reduction. Uh, the servicing will be accessed through a drive-through in the northeast corner, which will also provide the, uh, the loading for the parts department, which happens at night. So they would bring the parts into the, into the drive-through and from there, uh, during the day, the care, the, the parts cage would be taken back into the service department. And then for loading, uh, for vehicles, um, that'll happen on the west drive lane, um, so that the vehicle transport will drive into that lane, uh, drop their vehicles. Again, this happens at night, and, and then back out, or depending whether they backed in or drove in, uh, exit the property. Uh, the front portion of the building, uh, the parking out front is, is solely, um, customer parking, uh, and then the back will be customer overflow as well as vehicle parking for when the car's not being serviced. Uh, the owner of the, 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 of the project has a, uh, a, a, an arrangement with the, the property to the east, I believe it's Tyco, uh, where they, they have a hundred and sixty cars, uh, parking space, spaces that they can access. Uh, there isn't, uh, it's not untitled, but it, but it's, it's, uh, an agreement they, that they have in, putting in place. Um, the, both the loading for the parts and for the vehicle transports will be addressed, uh, with a truck sweep pass during the site plan approval process. And, uh, and the parking, it is what it is. The only, only sort of relief we were providing for the, for the parking is by accessing a hundred and sixty spaces to the east on the Tyco property.
Okay, thank you. Um, and have you read the community planning report?
Have I read it? Uh, I read the report from the, from the zoning examiner. And we've had some discussions with Ben DeRamo about it as well, and he's, he's in, he was in, supporting it.
This is a report from community planning dated October seventeenth.
Okay, I don't think I posted, I don't think I thought that.
It's up on the screen.
Yeah, I see it now, yeah. No, I didn't, I never received that, so. Uh, and then in terms of how we approach this process, you know, we, we realize that there's a secondary process that we have to go through for site plan, but in discussing with Ben DeRamo, he, he recommended that we, we go through for a variance first and then, uh, apply for the site plan.
Um, I'm just wondering whether we should, uh, give the applicant time to review this report before we.
There are two reports, actually, transportation requests and deferral of the application, because there is no parking study submitted.
Right.
So, um, I'm, I'm not sure if the applicant is aware of that.
No, and, and my question was going to be, had the applicant.
So we will.
Discuss this issue with plan. He needs to, this is a big change.
Yes. Um, I think, could we, could we, uh, stand down on this item to give the applicant time to review the report? We'll move on to the next item. It's just a very, uh, important report that you need to read.
And transportation.
And the transportation services report, which is asking for a deferral.
And, uh, Madam Chair, also, if there's any late correspondences, the applicant should look on the application information center, just to see if there's any late correspondences that have come in as well. So we can stand this down as long as needed, but it, it probably is beneficial for the applicant to go through the application information center to see what has, uh, been submitted and what is posted publicly for review.
Did you follow that, Mr. Ziegler, to, to check on the application?
I, I did.
Okay.
So we're, we're.
We will.
Deferring.
Yeah, we'll give you time to review that. We'll deal with one or two other applications, and we'll come back to you. Okay?
I, I don't think there's any, any, I, I, I'm looking at it right now, and I don't think there's any way I can really respond, um, today. Can we, can we defer, uh, and come back?
Certainly.
At this after we've had a chance to consult with our client and with Ben DeRamo?
Yes, absolutely. Um, we can consider a deferral at your request at this point, um, in order to give you time to, um, consult, to, to review the material and then consult with staff. Um, does somebody want to move a motion? Ms. Martin?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, um, defer this application, eleven, um, one 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 Bridgeland Avenue, in order for the applicant to, uh, read over the, the, um, staff report and also the transportation report and be able to, uh, respond accordingly.
Thank you. Seconder? Mr. Nipfel? All in favor? So that application, that was unanimous, uh, application deferred. And it will be brought back at a later date, if feasible. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item twenty-seven. Thirty-nine Bevdale Road. This is an application to legalize and maintain a rear yard deck. The variances are platform encroachment into the rear yard and from the west lot line. Um, on file, we have the previous decision, a survey, plans, and photos. Uh, do we have the applicant here?
Good evening, committee.
Sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, committee, Jonathan Buzkowski, three zero one Kiwatt Avenue.
Thank you. Um, there doesn't appear to be any other speakers. Uh, do we need a presentation? Uh, just questions?
I'd like to know how it happened. It's, it's a big change.
Sure. Uh, but we don't need a full presentation. Okay. Mr. Buzkowski, can you, uh, explain how, how we're in this situation, I guess? And, um.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Through, through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kniffel, they, they, they were not the original applicants with the approved dwelling. They bought it built. Um, when I spoke to them, they essentially said, we, we didn't know there was a restriction on the deck. Um, if you look at the elevation itself, it's not elevated to the level of the first floor. Um, it is sunken into the ground. Um, again, it's sort of reducing impacts, but in terms of how I did it, it's my understanding that they just didn't know they couldn't, um, extend that deck, uh, at the, at the lower height, um, into the rear yard. But I think that, I think the, the important thing is they weren't a part of the original process that had the committee of adjustment decision, so they're, they're not doing this after the fact while having it approved. Uh, through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Kniffel.
Are you satisfied that there isn't a variance, um, for landscaping required?
Yes, if we go back to the, um, the, the, the deck is, is, is. The deck is long, but very... It isn't extremely wide. So if we go back to the site plan itself, the usability of the deck is very linear in nature. And if we look there, you can see the amount of landscaping in the rear yard, through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Kniffel, is quite substantial. And they did go through a zoning review. I did not do this as a waiver. So yeah, we can see all the green, all the open space in that rear yard. And this is also a corner property, Mr. Kniffel, with the adjacent dwelling to the south, that actually being the side yard of it that has an access door. So in terms of that impact of where it's pushing closer to it, it's really mitigated by that being a rear yard to side yard and that having a door there.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? All right, let's take this into committee. Comments? Motion? Mr. Maserari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a straightforward application. There's no objection from the neighbors. It's just one variance, and I think it's minor. It meets the four tests. So I'd like to make a motion to approve with no condition.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Ms. Martin? All in favor? That is unanimous, carried. Your application's been approved.
Thank you. Enjoy the evening.
Thank you. Two. Okay, item 28, 345 Delaraine. This is an application to construct a new two-story dwelling with a front porch and rear deck. We have variances for side yard setback, roofie projection, height of side exterior main walls, platform side yard, canopy over a platform setback, building length, front yard, soft landscaping, number of stories, area of platform at the second story. On file, we have survey, plans, revised plans, site photos, a community planning report, urban forestry, and a letter of concern from 346 Delaraine and a letter of objection from 350 Delaraine. Do we have the applicant with us?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of committee. My name is Mohammed Ali Fatahi. I'm the applicant and the owner of the property. The address is 345 Delaraine Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. So first of all, do you have any changes to the application?
No changes.
All right, thank you. We do have a neighbor listed to speak. So could you provide us a brief presentation on the application?
Yes, sure. So basically, so this is my primary residence. So because my family is growing, so we decided to construct a new bit with more living space. So our design is nothing unusual in neighborhood. So it's based on what has been approved recently in the area. For example, on 253 Melrose Avenue. It's one street south of our address. So they approved exactly like the same plans as ours. And so we also take care to ensure that like the design is minimizing any potential impact on our neighborhood and meet our, also the design to maintain the neighborhood character and, I mean, nothing unusual and nothing is consistent with the surrounding area and the other new builds in the area.
Madam Chair, would you be okay if we put up the staff report?
Sure, that would be great. The west side? Have you seen the... To the applicant, have you seen the community planning staff report that's up on the screen right now?
Yes, so we modified our design to remove the variance number two.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
If we go back to the public notice, can we ask again if the applicant is making any changes?
Okay, so we'll go back to the public meeting notice or the public notice with the list of variances. So you are proposing to make a change to variance number two?
Yes, Madam Chair. We removed the variance number two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we put the planning staff report back up just to see if there's anything else? This is a late one, right? Oh, no, it's here. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. So through you, Madam Chair. If I'm asking the applicant, if you approve this application, are you open to change the driveway to permeable pavers? Because you're short with software landscaping at the front?
So can you repeat that, change the driveway to what exactly?
So you have less stormwater. Because you're short by eight percent.
Yes, sure, we can do that, yeah.
Okay, nice.
Okay, let's hear from the resident, Marcy Sherwood. If you could state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Marcy Sherwood. I am the resident of 346 Delaraine Avenue, which is directly across the street from the applicant, 345 Delaraine Avenue.
Go ahead.
My only concern, I don't have a concern with the height or the build of the project. My only concern is that if the existing residence does have asbestos or does contain asbestos, that this is reported and it is mitigated prior to the demolition of the residence.
Okay, we'll ask the applicant to address that.
Thank you. That's my only concern.
Mr. Fati?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And did you hear that, the concern from the neighbor about removal of the existing dwelling?
Yeah, we absolutely do that, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Kniffel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To the applicant, would you be prepared to put privacy screening on the east and west edges of your rear deck? It's substantially up in the air. It's quite high. And there's privacy concerns on both sides.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, as you requested.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to take this into committee? I think so. Comments?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to put forward a motion. I think with the amendment, I think it's a straightforward application. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this application as amended with variance number two to be eliminated. Front yard driveway to be permeable pavers and also inclusion of privacy screen on both east and west side of the rear deck, also subject to urban forestry condition.
One.
That is number one.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Kniffel? All in favor? That's unanimous, carried. Your application has been approved.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, that's it. All right, I think that completes all the items. Could we have a motion to adjourn? No, do we want to stay? Thank you, Mr. Kniffel. Do we need a seconder? Mr. Marziani? Thank you very much. Then, all in favor? That's... Sorry? Oh, sorry. Terminated, terminated. Sounds so fine. I don't think so. Pretty sure it's adjourned, but anyway. Thank you very much. Thank you to staff and panel members for enduring today's agenda. Thank you.